Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We're thrilled to have you as well as Julie and Colin here with us today. Hey guys.
Hello.
How you doing everyone?
So today we're going to be talking about email marketing and how you can get started harnessing this tried and true method to grow your brand, your brand and your business, generate more leads and of course have more people that you can connect with and share Young Living with. And of course, this is something that you can do entirely with Get Oiling. So we're excited to get into the details of that here today. We will do some demonstration of some of our tips and tricks, but today we're really going to be focused on some high level concepts. So make sure that you maybe grab something to take some notes with and we're going to get into it. But first head over into the chat, let us know where in the world you are. We're always excited to hear where you're from. And let us know maybe something that you learned this week in using your Get Oiling system. What is something that maybe a win that you could share? Head over into the chat and let us know what a win looks like for you this week. And of course, we will be hopping out a video here in a moment and we'll be getting into our slides here for today. And then of course, we will spend the latter half of our call on Q and A and working with you guys live. If you are someone who is here today looking for help or support, this is a great opportunity to find that in a hands-on setting. So do go ahead and head to the Q and A and let us know if you would like some help on the call. We don't have anyone signed up reserved for the second half, so we do have a bit more space there today. If that's something that you are interested in. Alright, so team, we are going to pop out a video. We're going to get into these slides and we again look forward to hearing from you in the chat here live on the Zoom. Alright, so today we're going to be talking about getting started with email marketing. This is again, a really important factor where it comes to showing up online, growing a brand, growing a business. If this isn't something that you're already doing, it's definitely something that you're going to want to add to your list of things to learn and incorporate into your efforts. So today we're going to talk about what it looks like to engage in email marketing as a brand partner, what it can do for you. We'll talk about how you can get started. We'll share some basic guidelines. You definitely want to make sure that you follow. And we'll share some tips to save you time because of course, this is something that you're going to want to engage with on an ongoing basis. And there are very important other things that you also need to make sure that you're doing for your business. We want to make sure that this very impactful thing you're doing doesn't take up too much of your time. And then of course, as always, we'll get into some live help and Q and A. So if you're here live on our call and you do have questions as we're going through to presentation today, or if you have questions that have nothing to do with today's topic, these are all welcome. Head over to the Q and A and pop those questions in. The chat can get a little lively. And especially when, when I'm done with the presentation and want to get to your questions, if they're in the chat, sometimes I can miss them. So please do add those to the Q and A. If you're watching this streamed in our Facebook group or you are watching this as a replay on our YouTube channel, you should go over here at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession so that you can know about the next training that we are hosting, the next topic, you can request a topic. And of course, you can join a live call and meet your community and we do have a really great one. If you'd like to work together on a call like this one, we do reserve the second half of these calls for that opportunity. Getoiling.com/websitereview is where you're going to want to fill out a form so that we know what you need help with. And then of course, you can select an upcoming Thursday. We do start our calls at noon Eastern time and we tend to get to these website reviews or work reviews in the latter half of our hour-long call. And if you are looking for help, if you want someone to do stuff for you, we've got you covered. Getoiling.com/concierge is where you can go to learn about our team and request a quote. Alright, so let me know in the chat, say I am or say me, are you building and nurturing currently an email list? And this is a list of leads, not your VO file. Not talking about our customers here. I'm talking about a list of people who could be your future customers. I'm seeing some yes, some heck yeah, awesome, building, awesome, great guys. Oh, I love it. Just getting started. Fantastic. So I am so excited to see that so many of you are engaging in this practice. And I hope that if you are not yet, that what you learned today and of course, what you hear from the folks in the community here in the chat, encourage you to go ahead and get started on this. Because it really is something that you're going to want to incorporate that's going to help you a lot long-term. Alright, so again, make sure that what we're talking about a list, we are talking about not our VO file, not our list of customers from Young Living, but specifically a list that is made up of people who are not yet your customers. The beauty of having a list means you've got a list of prospects, right? It means you've got a list of people who you could share with. And for your type of business, there are a few things that are more valuable than that. Alright, so email marketing, it works for brand partners. There are tons of fads that have come and gone and there are some that still stick around and people swear by them, right? So some people really love social selling on Instagram and for some people that works really well. There are places in that strategy where it falls apart, right? Namely, in your ability to reach your audience whenever you want to. You could see people with millions of followers on Instagram, but if they don't have any of those inside of a database for them to contact whenever they want to, they are leaving a ton of money on the table. Similarly, maybe you like to engage in text marketing, which you can do with, with your Get Oiling system as well. It's a great way to reach people directly in their pockets, but it's very light on substance, right? And it's not the best way necessarily to build a relationship at scale. Email marketing is one of the oldest forms of marketing in the digital age and it is still the king where all experts are concerned. So the reason why you want to engage in this is because you are helping a ideally very large group of people cultivate a you habit. Meaning they are used to and look forward to opening an email from you on a regular basis where they get to know you a little better or they trust you a little bit more. And so that next time that you want to place an opportunity in front of them, they are primed, ready and don't have a ton of, of questions or concerns with moving forward with something that you're offering, right? And you're able to build that trust and connection at scale. And that means that if you have a list of 10 people or you have a list of 100,000 people, you are following the same steps to build trust and connection with all of them at once with the same single activity, right? So lots of people can be primed and interested in working with you at the same time, right? This also allows you again, and this is dissimilar from say, social media strategies. This allows you to get the word out whenever you want. If you post something on a social media feed or to your stories or what have you, there's a very short shelf life there and it's not going to reach 100% of the people who you've worked hard to be a follower, right? To acquire as a follower on those platforms. When you have acquired their contact information and they're on your list, you could email them whenever you want to. And say exactly what you want to, right? And make the impact that you really need to make for your business. This also sets you apart from the masses on social media. It's great to have a presence as a way to get found, but you instantly look more serious, right? You become someone that is easier to trust because you have the type of business that invests in this type of infrastructure and that chooses to communicate in this substantive way, right? So this sets you apart in a lot of ways as a brand. And then the best part about this, I think especially for those of you who are maybe a little bit introverted or don't feel super comfortable with the idea of promotion and marketing, you're providing a pathway for people to tell you when they're ready to come to you and say, hey, how do I work with you, right? Wouldn't that be amazing if you had people who just responded to emails that you sent and said, hey, you know what? I've been thinking about the thing that you wrote me last week and I feel like I'm interested in solving this problem and you're the only person that I know that knows this much about it. Can you help me? If you have a list and something like that has happened for you, head over into the chat and let us know. This is kind of the most remarkable thing is that you are providing a pathway, a passive pathway for people to not feel pressured to come to you, but for them to feel ease and to know that when they're ready, they can come to you. And isn't that the easiest sale? You aren't, you're not even selling, you're just connecting at that point. So if you already have a lead generating offer, so some free thing that you're giving away and a funnel where you're collecting your leads, then you're already halfway there to building a list and obviously being in a position where you can engage in these email marketing strategies, right? So if you don't have a funnel yet, that is going to be an important first step. I am going to go over what all of the first steps really look like here, here in just a moment, but this is going to be an important piece of it. If you go to the Get Oiling Success Academy, that's going to be under the Start Here menu, either on the left-hand side of your screen, if you're on desktop, or it will be in the dropdown menu if you are on a mobile device. Go to the, the Start Here menu, look for the Success Academy, click Online Resources and Courses and head over to this Lead Generation Workshop. This is going to walk you through and it's only just going to take, I mean honestly, the amount of time that this takes for you to go through is less than a movie. And you can, and I don't mean like a super long one either, like one of those short movies. So you could go through the steps here and get yourself a really effective and simple straightforward funnel that you can begin to use for this process. Alright, so once we have that in place, we're able to move forward. But just in case you're wondering why a funnel is important for this, we want to make sure that we have a place to capture names and emails. Essentially what a funnel is in this simplified sense is a way for you to grab information and then from the folks who say yes, because some people will arrive on a page where you're offering your free thing in exchange for their name and email and they'll go, they, they won't pay, they, they won't actually convert to a lead, right? They'll, they'll click off, they'll leave. But for those who do, we have narrowed down. So this is like the funnel gradually narrows toward the bottom, right? So we're now we're in a narrower part of the funnel. There's exposure, that's the widest. And then we've got the folks who've converted and then you've got a sequence of emails that would go out. And those of course are hoping that there's, they're being sent out in the interest of moving that person toward a next step with you. So maybe that's a call with you. Maybe that's joining a live event, watching a recording, et cetera. And then of course, at the very bottom of your funnel is where they come out as a client, right? As, as a young living customer. So when you capture those names and emails, those people are giving you permission to email them. So permissions, first we need emails, right? So we get those from our funnel and then we need permission to email these people, right? And so when you are setting up your funnel, you are setting up a means by which people give you permission to email them. And ultimately, you need to provide a compelling reason for people to give away their contact information to you so that you can show up in their inbox on a regular basis, right? How many of you have completely overstuffed inboxes from things that you've signed up for, right? But there are people that you are actively opening emails from and you want to be that person to your people. So we want to give them a reason, this is relevant to them. And then of course, we're gathering their permission, which is critical. Now, as a Young Living brand partner, you do have the ability in your, in your system to import contact information of people who have not given you permission to email them. That would be your VO file and namely your non-personal enrolled from your VO file, right? That's what we're talking about today, very specifically focusing on our lead generation, right? Not how we serve our people, but this is a really important piece that you need to understand. Permission is a central key to making this work because you don't want to show up in someone's inbox uninvited. That's going to land you reported as spam, et cetera, right? And we don't want that. So once your, your leads are on your list, you can then serve them with tips and ideas, inspiration, content, et cetera, every single week. Which means that these are, because you're showing up consistently to give them things that are valuable to them. They are the perfect people to gently nudge and move in the direction of however you prefer to share Young Living. So maybe that's a call, maybe it's offering them a wellness scan, maybe that's an in-person event, whatever that looks like. You're able to most effectively get these folks, because they're already paying attention to you, to pay attention to an opportunity for them to hear about Young Living, right? So let's talk about how we can get started with email marketing. First, you gotta set up a custom domain and email address. When you sign up for Get Oiling, 100% you can connect your existing perhaps free email address. So say Google, Yahoo, Hotmail, Protonmail, et cetera. You can come to us with an address like that, but you are going to have a much bigger impact and a much higher success rate if you are sending from your own private domain, right? So that means you want to have yourname.com, your businessname.com, dot net, whatever, right? So you need a domain and then an email address from that domain. Okay, so that's going to be hello at or my name at, right, et cetera. There's no real right or wrong there. So you need a custom domain and email address. We do have help articles on how to, how to set this up, but the short answer is support@getoiling.com. We've got folks who are super qualified, Colin's here on the call and he handles a lot of that. It's, it's actually pretty straightforward and there's a lot that we can do on the backend to help you with your deliverability once you actually start sending those emails. So get in touch with our team if you haven't done so yet. Then you want to, of course, have a funnel in place that collects leads from your system, like we've already discussed. You also want to go ahead and establish a tag for your general mailing list. Now you may call this newsletter, but you want to make sure that this is differentiated from whatever newsletter it is that you're sending to your Young Living people. Because this is not the same as sending your monthly PV promos and here's what's on sale with Young Living emails. This is fundamentally different from that. So have a general mailing list tag that is different from the one that you use to filter for people who are in your VO file. Alright, and then plan to email this list on a regular scheduled basis every week. Remember, we want them to develop a you habit. So that means that we need to show up consistently. So first thing in the morning, say 9:00 AM, generally speaking, maybe central time US is fine. If you're ideal, you know, if your, your audience base is somewhere else, obviously this is going to need to be adjusted based on where you are and notably where your people are. But the main point is, is that you want to show up consistently, right? So at the very least, you're going to be sending at the same time, on the same day of the week, every week, alright? And if you do that, then you can build habits, right, for them. And of course, you are getting into a good habit for yourself and for your business. And let's talk about some guidelines to follow. Email broadcasts are the tool that we're using for this, right? So campaigns are a really cool feature in your Get Oiling system. That is something that you can use for many different purposes, but not this one. This is something that you're doing ad infinitum, right? This is every week forever. You're going to be sending an email to your list. And there's no way really to build a campaign that does that, right? Because the email that you sent three weeks ago, you're not going to send that again, because that's not what broadcasts are really for. So these broadcasts are essentially you filtering your contacts for that general mailing list tag and then sending now or scheduling for sending later your message to your list, right? Now note that while your customers, so your Young Living customers, those that are imported from your VO file, they could also be on this general mailing list. This is not the place that we serve them, right? This is not where we talk about Young Living. We do not talk about Young Living promos. We do not talk about gift with purchase. We do not talk about sales, not explicitly. Now, I'm not saying, don't ever mention Young Living ever. I am saying, do not mention Young Living the vast majority of the time. Because the people who are on this list are on this list because there's something you know that they don't, that matters to them. Now, if Young Living mattered to them, they would already be a customer, yes? So we need to show up and serve them based on what they want, what they need, what they're looking for and what they can get from you, right? So if every now and then you mention, hey, by the way, I'm offering a class this week, it's on Zoom. I'm going to be talking about how I use essential oils to blah, 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 blah. That's totally fine, right? But we are not going to place and pitch Young Living product, promos, content, et cetera. Cool. Alright, we will very quickly lose the people on our list because they will not feel like they are being served. They'll feel like they're being used to be promoted to, right? Okay, now you want to always, of course, make sure that you are filtering your contacts for that correct contact tag. Have one and keep it the same for your general mailing list. And then remember this, and this is as true for, I've talked about this previously, about how we serve our customers with Young Living specific content. It's as true for that as it is for this and it might be even more true for this. You really don't need images. I don't know who put the idea in brand partners' heads that they need to have emails that look like they're being sent from companies that sell shoes and scarves. We don't sell shoes and scarves and we don't actually in fact, sell essential oils, Young Living does, right? Our job is to have relationships with people who like us, who like what we have to say and who recognize that we know something, that we have access to something that they want, right? And that access, again, if, if they knew they wanted Young Living, they'd be a customer already. They want what you know, right? They want the results you've gotten. That's why they're listening, right? So you want to talk about stuff that matters to them. And sure, if it does actually make sense, if it is functionally relevant to have an image, then of course you can use one. But they should not be central to the emails that you send, not in this type of business. Now, if you're using the Get Oiling Store and you are doing e-commerce and you have, you know, soaps that you make and you want to share pictures of your pretty soaps, that makes sense to use images, right? But that's not what we're doing here. It's certainly not the topic of today's call. So what you want to do when you're writing your messages to your list is to just write like you're writing to a friend. Think about your list of, of these subscribers as a great big group of great friends, because that's what you want them to be and that's how you want them to think of you as a great friend who's showing up in their inbox every week to give something to them that matters, right? So write like you're writing to a friend. And if you are going to use images, again, if it is, if you feel is absolutely necessary to use images, include alternate text on all of your images. This does impact your send score, which is sort of code language for the, the email delivery companies that sort of manage whether or not things land in the promotions folder versus the inbox versus spam, et cetera. Alternate text is an important thing to include. I will be showing you momentarily how you can apply that to your images. And then also you want to make sure that where you're going to include a link and a call to action to click that link, you want to make sure that you're aiming to really just have one per email that goes out. There's a couple of reasons for this. One of this is just general efficacy. If you're, if you're giving someone more than one option, they are more likely to choose none. If you give them one option, they're incredibly more likely to actually take action on that option that you're providing, right? So aim for one link, one call to action per message that you send out. Oh, and the other reason is in your Good Oil Link system, there is a link tracking that is available. You can see who has clicked a link when you've sent out a broadcast and that who has clicked a link is any link in the email, right? So it's also more effective for your tracking purposes. And then finally, if you have a blog, use your blog to share posts, right? So if you, if you want to write a blog, looks like AJ's doing that, saw that in the chat there. Use this blog to syndicate or share your content that you're creating. And if you're not blogging yet, that's totally fine. Make a post on social media and use your email to your list to encourage people to come participate, weigh in and so on. Now let's talk about some time-saving tips before we go dive into some hands-on work. First, make sure that you are keeping a running list of ideas. We've talked about swipe files in the past on some of our trainings. Essentially what that is, is you are engaging in being an active participant as a content creator and you're gathering ideas so that when you see an idea that you think is a really great one, grab that idea and save it for later. This can be a very simple list. It could be a text file. We did talk last week on our call, someone mentioned Google Keep as being a great place to, to grab and store ideas. I love that as a cloud-based solution. There really is no wrong way to do this, but keep a running list because you're not always going to feel inspired and know what it is that you want to send on any given week. So if you have a running list, you've always got something to choose from. And then you can also, when the inspiration hits you, or especially maybe your parent, you're very busy with your kids, you only have little chunks of time and maybe you've got a bit more free time than you thought you had. Go ahead and schedule multiple email broadcasts in advance, right? So when you're going to sit down to write an email to your list, don't just write it for this week, write it for the next three weeks, right? And then you, you can set it and forget it and you've got that engagement going out regardless of what your inspiration looks like next week or the week after, or of course, what your, your schedule looks like. The other time-saving tip that I hope that you guys will take me up on today is to create a saved reply in Get Oiling. This is where you can preserve the formatting that you want to use in the emails that you send out. And again, this is really going to be, for those of you who are really intent on including some level of image-based branding in your emails, you can of course, establish and maintain your formatting for that. And if you do include URLs that you share often outside of what would maybe be in your signature, you can include that in your saved reply as well. Alright? So let's go take a look at these tips in action. We'll get into our Q and A, of course. And if we are going to be working together live with anyone, we'll of course, have that opportunity as well. So bear with me for just a moment. I want to make sure that I'm signed into the correct account and then we're going to go check this out. Okay, yes, here we are. Okay, so I mentioned a couple of things that you may or may not be familiar with in your system. One of those is the saved reply feature. And another is, is the alternate text on an image that you send in an email. And of course, alternate text is something that you can apply to images wherever you have them in your system. It's a good practice to include alternate text for any image that you use, whether that be on a page, on a blog post especially, and definitely in your emails. So let's go into saved replies and we can actually do all of this at once. So that's, sorry, it's not in settings. It's going to be down here under your content library. Because saved replies can be used for lots of things. Alright, so I'm going to create a new one and this is going to be newsletter broadcast template. And I'll even include here, general mailing list. And here I can say what I want to say, include links that I want to use and of course, include images where I would prefer to use them. So I'm just going to go ahead and grab an image from the library that I might include in an email like this. Again, I would only use this if it is absolutely, you know, something that you feel is necessary for what you're sharing or sending. I would argue that if, if it requires a lot of images, then perhaps you create a blog post and then you send them to the blog post. But here we go. I'll go ahead and use this one here. There it is. It's actually quite large. But you can see this menu that pops up here. It's this one right here. Alter, alternative text. So it's called 14 Days of Self-Love. So I'm just going to call it that. And I'll update it. Alright, so maybe this is the sort of title image that you're using for your newsletter, which is certainly fine. Or maybe it is something that you're using for a blog broadcast. If this is something that you're using to share updates from your blog, you could certainly link this if you wanted to. Again, you could provide a link by going to insert link right here with clicking on the image. But here's what we'll do. I'm going to go ahead and give a greeting and so we'll say hi, first name. And if I'm going to be emailing on Mondays, let's say, I'm going to say happy Monday. And then I will add text here. Right, so that's going to be my copy. And then I'll say, remember you can always find our community by heading here. Look forward to seeing you there. And then of course, you should have your signature set up and that's going to be in your contact settings. So that'll apply automatically. So your signature would populate underneath here. So this is an example of where if you're going to use a link, so say to, if you've got maybe a Facebook group, or in this case, I'm going to send them to Jane's website to the member area. So members, I'll insert here. And so this way I don't have to remember that link. I don't have to manually add that link every single time I want to send this. So I'm going to go ahead and create the saved reply. And now I want to filter for my general mailing list so that I can schedule this message. So I'll go to dashboard. I'm going to send email, text or app notification, just one message. And I'm going to filter for my tag. So here's my newsletter tag. I'll go to write email. And then I'll head down here and I'll go find that saved reply. So that's to my general mailing list. There it is. And you could see that that is all here. The link is here. The alternate text is there already. You don't have to edit it and I can just say what I want to say, link what I want to link and it's all here and ready to go. Obviously, you do want to make sure you put in a compelling subject line. Definitely don't use the same one every week. That's why I left it blank. You want to make sure that every week you are being very clear about what's in this email. So don't just say, you know, this week's newsletter or something like that. Tell them about what's in it. That gives them a reason to actually open it. So obviously you set up your subject line. So I wish I knew this when I was younger. I wish I knew this when I was younger. Fourteen tips to feel better every day, right? I could put something like that in here. Of course, I could put the copy in here. And then I can go ahead and schedule this to go out since I'm going to be sending on Mondays. I'll send it on the first. I'll send them at nine AM Eastern Time. I'm Eastern Time. But you can obviously choose your preference there for the, for when you send it. So I'll go ahead and schedule this. If you want to see what it looks like, you can send yourself a preview. But then you schedule that out to your contacts and you could always go into your messages here and you can see what is scheduled and when. So you could go ahead and do this multiple times as often as you need to. And you of course, in this case can schedule pretty far in advance. You can go back and modify if you decide, you know what, this one that I was going to send on Monday, there's something that happened that I want to make sure that I'm addressing that's more of the moment. So maybe I'm going to change this to go out the following week and then I'll write a new email for this week, right? So you do have the ability to do that, which is pretty, pretty cool. So yeah, those are the basics. I'm excited to get into Q and A with you guys. And of course, if anybody would like to work together on today's call, we certainly have space for that as well. Okay, Alison has a few questions here. So how would you go about not exactly starting over? But I used to send monthly newsletter with mostly personal information, blog updates, and the bottom buttons for Young Living monthly promo Facebook group. Haven't done this for months, likely over a year. So I go back through all of my contacts and the general newsletter tag, not Young Living Newsletter, and see if they should be on that list or start over doing something else, which I guess is using a lead magnet. So if you are someone who was engaging your list on some consistent basis in the past, or really this is going to be true for you if you acquired leads in the past and you would like to be able to successfully start sending to them again. What you're going to want to do is ideally, how I would do this is to create an automation, right? And that automation is going to add them to your general mailing list tag, right? I'll show you exactly how I would set this up. And I don't know if you are planning on using the exact same tag, right? But essentially what I would do here is under, here we go, contact settings. Under automations, I would, all right, this will be add to general mailing list from old leads, right? So this would be, I'm going to send this to, like, this is going to be clickable and it's going to allow people who you send this out to to say, yes, I'd like to continue getting these emails from you, right? So this is one option. Another way that you could do this is to remove them, right? The other option would be to remove from general mailing list. And you would just be doing the opposite of what I'm sharing with you here today. So under add action, I'm going to add, in this case, my general mailing list tag is newsletter. And then I'm going to send them to a custom page. And that custom page, I don't actually have one set up yet. So let's just go ahead and do that here real quick. It's just going to be like a confirmation page that says your preferences have been updated. So super duper simple. I'll start with a blank page. And I'll just do a one column here and we'll say your preferences have been updated. And then you could put any other information that you would like here, right? So, you know, link them to your blog, link them to wherever, right? You can do anything that you like where that's concerned. So we'll say preferences updated. That's going to be available by link only. And I'm going to save that page. Now I'll go back and create that automation. So here, we'll go back to settings. We'll create an automation. And remember, I want to send them to that page to let them know that they've updated their preferences. So there we go. Preferences updated is where we're going to send them. This is going to be, again, you could choose to give them the opt-in or opt-out option. Do one or the other. I would err on the side if you, if you already have the tag and you just haven't been mailing them in a long time, then I would consider maybe using the opt-out. So give them the option. And this is going to be important to you because as a brand partner, you might also have these people in your system because they're a customer, but maybe they don't want the personal updates, right? So you don't want to necessarily lose the ability to mail them for PD promos and stuff like that that they may still be wanting to get from you, right? So we're not opting them out of all. We're just giving them the option to no longer receive emails about this particular thing, right? So again, either or, in this case, I'm going to say add. So add to general mailing list from old leads. And we will add our general mailing list tag. And that's going to be newsletter in my case here. And it's as simple as that. So what we're going to do here is we're going to hit copy. And then we'll go back to our dashboard and we're going to schedule an email to go out to that list, right? So this is going to go out to our newsletter list. And this is where we would say, you know, hey, it's been a while, right? And then here you let them know, you know, I was really excited when I, you know, first got in touch with you because I, you know, had plans to do X, Y, and Z thing, but you know how life happens. Here's what's going to be happening in the future, right? I'm going to be talking about this. You can expect this from me. If this is something that you would like to continue getting, click here, right? And when you do the click here, what you're going to have them click, and you could either paste. So I'll put a click here. And we can link it and I can actually paste in because I copied that, right? Or you can use this super handy automation insertion, which is right here. And we can look up our automation. What did we call that? General mailing list? Add to general mailing list from old leads. Here we go. So then we'll say click here. And oops, that shouldn't be there, but I can copy it and I can move it to where I want it, right? So this is where you are going to send them, right? So when they click this, they're going to see that page, right? That says your preferences have been updated. And internally, they're going to have that new tag. Now, if you were going to do the inverse of what I've just mentioned, which again, this is really going to kind of depend on your circumstances and where these leads might have come from. Because again, if there are someone who is in your VO file that you want to be able to maybe continue to serve on the Young Living side of things, then you want to be able to preserve that. So in that case, you might give them the opt-out of this option, right? Opt into it, opt out of it. It's up to you. But either way, they're either going to have the tag added in this case, or in the inverse, have that mailing list tag removed from them. So that when you filter, those aren't the people that you're sending to, right? And in either case, they're going to go to a page that says, you know, you've succeeded in doing what you wanted to do. You are no, you know, your contact preferences have been updated. Let me see. And yeah, that is, it's not so daunting when basically all you're doing is just sending out a link that says, here, click this if you want to get this from me. And it's better to start with a smaller group of engaged people than to sit in the emotion of lack, right? And the worry of lack of, oh, I had this many people and I want to try to keep as many of those as possible. Because if they're not engaged anymore, there's not necessarily a lot that you can do to get them to do something again. So understand that there is an abundance of attention that you can garner as a brand and an abundance of people who would love to hear from you from where you are right now. So it is okay to move forward, even if you started with a list of a thousand people and only twenty-five of them, that's a very small number, but only twenty-five of them clicked. Maybe you send it a second time to those who didn't, right? But of course, go with who says yes and only worry yourselves with those who say yes. Quality over quantity. All right. What do you think of taking a look at other newsletters we get and modeling after those? I've done that in the past. As long as we reword and give it a twist, not via, uh, no, I really don't recommend that, Alison. It needs to be from you. It needs to be from your voice. There is something to be said for using Write With AI, for instance, to deliver Young Living promos, right? Because Write With AI is going to be able to deliver product information that maybe you don't know how to articulate or to connect the dots of how certain body systems work that you don't necessarily feel as confident about speaking to. But where it comes to emailing your list, ChatGPT or even our Write With AI isn't going to give you the results that you really want because those are people who wanted to hear from you, right? Not some modification of what a robot said that you think sounds good. It needs to be you with all of your, you know, typos and grammatical errors. Like it needs to authentically be you because anybody could go and get information from a robot on the internet now, right? So it's your voice that people really need to hear. So I don't, I don't think that you're going to want to, like, you can model what someone else is doing by observing the psychology they're using and trying to emulate that yourself. The formatting they may be using, even taking from a swipe file, a really great headline that they wrote, like an email subject line. All of that is really great. Get inspiration and ideas, but ultimately the delivery needs to be yours. I think the asking them to opt out might be better, scary, but better. Sure, that's not going to remove them from your system though. And that's kind of the thing, right? Like, I kind of want to give them a chance to... Well, actually, no, if you think about it. If you're going to do the opt-out option, Alison, what I would consider doing is just maybe having, like, have it in the first email, right? That you send out before you send out anything else. But then on an ongoing basis, say, prefer not to receive these emails. Click here and I'll remove you from this list. And then you could just kind of have that as a footnote in that saved reply template. So yeah, that is something that you could do. Make it an opt-out situation. Except they're not opting out of everything. They're just opting out of that one thing. So yeah, you could certainly do that. And then of course, something like that you could retain for use ongoing. Thank you for that question. Yeah, if anybody is looking for a little bit of hands-on help, feel free to let me know. Suzie agreed a hundred percent, using our Write With AI or even an AI like ChatGPT is really great for generating ideas. I think that one of the best tried and true methods of generating ideas for what to send to your list is going to come from observation of what works on you, right? Because when you are, when you are opening emails from people who are sending things to you, you're on their list, right? You, you need to kind of be in that position where you could say, oh, I see what they did, right? That worked on me. That's so clever, right? You kind of separate yourself from the process if you just rely on AI for this. And I really do feel like there's an important thing that's missed, right? Like, I think that we need to be present in understanding the affect so that we can then replicate something similarly in a way that we understand. It's almost like learning a language. Like, we could just use Google Translate all day. But you have to actually start practicing communicating in the language to become fluent. And this is something that's good to be fluent in. Adrian says, is it good to include that one-liner to opt out even though the option to unsubscribe or update contact information is always at the bottom? It depends on how you run your list and what you email about, right? So, so an example of how you would use that updating preferences automation as opposed to the opt-out that's at the bottom of your emails. If you are someone who is maybe going to be sending promotions about a specific event or something that you're promoting for a period of time, but you want to be able to keep those people on your list, but maybe they just aren't interested in that specific thing, right? So maybe you are promoting a retreat. And for the next two months, you're going to be promoting this retreat so you can fill seats for it, but you're still going to be mailing your list like you normally would. So when you send those retreat-focused emails, you can basically create a tag that says, do not email about retreat and have that be the thing that people click and that tag is applied to them. And you just have to make sure that you are filtering to exclude those people who don't want to hear about the retreat as you're emailing over those weeks, right? So that would be an example about how you do something like that. If you are, if you are emailing about a specific subject on an ongoing basis and maybe you kind of operate multiple interest lists, right? So maybe there's sort of like the mom blog newsletter, but then there's also this other thing, topic that you mail about and you keep them separate. You can allow someone to opt themselves out of one and to another and so on. So it's not always necessary, but it is something that can be helpful because our, like, the way that people opt out of communications with you in GetOiling, what they see as options to opt out, if it's not clear to them, you might accidentally lose that person completely. So they actually see the lists of the campaign names, the as shown as information for the campaign, which is in the campaign setting. So there's the name of it that you see internally. And then there's this as shown as name. And if you don't have that named in such a way that they can clearly understand what campaign they're opting out from, then again, you could lose them completely. General mailing list is what, like, that's the bucket for everybody regardless of tag. And people can't untag themselves in our system. That's what I'm suggesting to choose these automations for. So if this is someone you want to keep on your list for other purposes, then you would use that click the automation so that I don't mail you about this specific thing, right? So if your interest is in retaining them as a subscriber for other purposes, use that automation feature. Because when you're broadcasting, this has nothing to do with campaigns. They could unsubscribe from all the campaigns that are applied to them and still get these emails because they're tagged, right? And you're filtering for tags. Okay, let's see. So I now, okay, so I have two email lists, members, newsletter, and general newsletter. Would I send the first weekly email to both? Okay, so you want to have one, like, general mailing list, right? And that is for your leads. Your customers can opt themselves into this and it's fine if they're there as well, but it is for your leads. The content is for your leads and it is not Young Living stuff. That's tag one, right? So you could call that general newsletter. And then maybe you call the Young Living one, Young Living Newsletter, right? And so that's for the people in your VO who opt in to get those weekly. So that's in that instance, if you're going to be mailing your list and you're going to be sending stuff to your Young Living people, you are operating two newsletters to two different audiences. The general mailing list newsletter, which isn't necessarily a newsletter, like, you're not going to set it up the same way. Like, a Young Living newsletter is more likely to have things like images in it, right? Talking about like, here's the product I'm using this week. Here's how I'm using it. Click here to go buy it, et cetera. You send that to your people from your VO file who said yes to getting emails from you. If that's what you're doing on a weekly basis, you're going to be following similar steps, but that's the tag you're filtering for. So you've got a Young Living newsletter tag. Doesn't matter what you call it. It's your choice. But then you've got your general one. And these people may choose to hop onto this list as well because maybe you're talking about homeschooling and these are customers who like what you have to say and they want to hear the homeschooling stuff, which is fine. They're on both. But this is content for non-Young Living folks and this is Young Living folks' content. So that's basically it. So you are going to be mailing them at the frequency that you choose. For your general mailing list, my recommendation always is at least once a week. And then for your Young Living folks, that could be once a month. I mean, you want to be encouraging them to opt into Young Living's own communications and Young Living emails frequently. They need to be hearing, like, your job as a brand partner is to connect brand to person that's in your network, right? Not to be, you know, a duplicate of what Young Living's already doing. So you could email Young Living stuff once a month if you want. And then definitely make sure the lead generating and lead nurturing stuff is more frequent. Let's see. Send the first. It's been a while. And yeah, if you haven't been sending to either for some time, you're basically going to be doing the same thing just for those two different audiences, right? So if you're doing like, like, oops, my bad email, do an oops, my bad email for your list, do an oops, my bad email for your VO file, right? And in both cases, you can say opt in here or opt out here. It's the same steps, but you are going to be doing that for both in that case, Alison. Is there a way to remove my home address from the bottom of every email? AJ, nope. It is actually illegal to do that. There are very specific restrictions. It does depend on your locale, but I know you live in the US. You do have to have a physical address in your, in the footer of your emails as a business. If you would prefer for that to not be your home address, you can absolutely get an address online, right? So these are, you know, typically going to be, I actually use one for, you know, for business entities that I have. I have an iPostal. It's iPostal one, like the letter I postal one. And those actually have physical address locations, right? They've got, they can receive mail for you and forward it to you, right? So if you incorporate as a business or even if you are operating as a sole proprietor, which a lot of folks are, you can set those up that way as well. So you do have an option there that doesn't include the use of your home address, but it does have to be a physical address. Okay, let's see. Changes newsletter to report is a format reading. You could, got an acronym here. So the weekly newsletter could just be what I was doing last week, the recipe, homeschool, workout, blog post, keep it simple. Yes. Period, a hundred percent. The main thing that you want to make sure that you're doing with what you're sending to your list in terms, in terms of content on an ongoing basis. The main thing you want to make sure you're doing is showing up consistently. And then telling them something that you think matters to them. Right? So this could be something that's inspirational, informative, entertaining, educational, you pick. Up to you. And and yeah, absolutely. If if you want to follow a clever acronym here, so I've been reading this, eating this, playing this, recommending this. Uh, treating that, like, that's sure, yeah. That's fun. Uh, just stay consistent, whatever it is. Allow people the opportunity to get to know you in a way that um they can interact with comfortably on a regular basis. We don't want to create pattern interrupts, right? Because that's, that creates friction. We want you to become a a part of something that is enjoyable. That is um, you know, something that they look forward to. And so um, kind of. Keeping things more or less the same and how you do what you do on a regular basis is how you're going to be able to facilitate that. Let me see if there is anything else here. Oh, thank you for clarifying that. Greg says here in the US, PO box is acceptable. So you could just go to your post office for that. Awesome, awesome. Um, a quick way to tag it starting today. Uh, Myrna, I would follow along with what I just mentioned. Uh, so maybe creating that opt-in automation tag, right? So create an automation, have it tag them with general mailing list. Uh, and then send them to a page that says your, so you know, your preferences have been updated. And then to the people that you maybe are connected to, but you haven't been like connecting to in this intentional way. You haven't been using a general mailing list tag. Uh, then of course you can. Um, you can send that out with the link for them to click and say yes. And then just start with whoever says yes. If it's two people, that's two more than you had before, and that's fantastic. And then you just want to make sure that you're promoting uh the growth of that list on an ongoing basis. I'm so happy that this is timely uh timely for you, Christina. Uh, let's see, yes, if you take out the street address and leave the city states up, yes, uh, that's uh, that's not a complete address. And um, you know, I don't know how often the enforcers come for this, but the fines are steep. So you 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 don't want to fool around with it too much. Grab yourself a PO box. They're pretty cheap. You can get one locally. Uh, and for roughly the same price, you could even get something uh like the one that I mentioned. Which actually provides you with a usable physical business address. Um, that, you know, could even accept mail on your behalf if you are incorporated. Uh, and want to have a separate place uh for for those things. And that's, I mean, it, that's an interesting topic that I'm sure that we're probably not going to ever delve into a great deal because we do have an international audience. On these calls and in our system. Uh, but uh, but if you are serious about uh being a. Um, a business owner and working uh your business long-term. Don't wait forever to incorporate yourself. Let that be something that kind of uh propels you toward uh being serious about what you do. Uh, let me see. Awesome. Oh, yeah, definitely. Um, Alison, glad to see that that's something that you've been working on. That keyword in particular is going to be especially uh important for uh for text. Um, I would just err against using uh CBD anywhere on your website. Unfortunately, because it is uh sort of um a legal minefield uh in the US in particular. Some states, yes, some states, no, and online, there's just tons of spam and crazy stuff. Uh, whether it's email, uh, whether it's your website itself, if you want to accept payments on your website, Stripe will give you a headache if CBD is mentioned. Right? So Young Living has incredible CBD products. You're just going to want to be a little bit more creative about what. You call it, right? So you can say, you know, plant, plant-based whatever, you know what I mean? Like, and and don't even, don't use the emoji either, like C and then the emoji uh for a B, like, just. Try to find a way to avoid it, uh, because that's going to um. Potentially cause you some issues. And in the case of text, it's a pretty expensive ones for T-Mobile. Um. How do I check besides putting CBD in the search? That's a fine question. Um. Greg, do you have any ideas as to how we might be able to like to? Scan content. On your site and at public facing site. If you've got it in your member area, that's not a problem. Um, but how how might we double check ourselves where that's concerned?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose you could uh. One idea that comes to mind, if you want to search for public facing, usually Google will crawl the website and so you can go to Google and I think you can type. Site colon and then your URL and it. Well, probably do CBD space and then site colon and then whatever your website address is. And that should show up with anything on this site that has CBD that's public facing. That'd be more for, I guess, uh, the Stripe people. Um, in terms of like texting and all that, you know, it's not. Texting providers don't like that. So just, I would say, stay away from that entirely on CBD. With texting, um, because that can have some problems and there's like T-Mobile has implemented some fines for that too, for putting. I mean, that's not the only thing, but that's one of the things. So um. You know, looking through your campaigns, maybe the ones that people potentially sent by text, or if you don't want to use text at all, you can go and edit the campaigns and set them to be email only. Um, that would be a couple of things that come to mind. And if somebody, you know, on two-way texting and they like start talking about, it's okay if they text you with that, because they're not, you know. There, you're not really under control about people texting to you. Uh, but if you uh. You know, if the conversation turns to something that you can't really reply on, you could always like call, you know, or or do something else. Send an email, say like, hey, I gotta, you know, follow up my email on this, so. But yeah, I think finally on the website, by using Google or one of the other search engines with the site tag would probably work and be the best way to do that.
Yeah, and that's actually really similar to a a a search feature that I think I've shared with you guys before. To maybe look for testimonials, right? Where I was looking uh at the oil testimonials website. And putting in whatever the keyword is, product name, et cetera. So it's word, space. And then site colon, no space, your website, right? And then you, you can actually search for it for that. Um. You know, I, it's, it's hard to say. I do think that um, that the legal substance gets conflated with the illegal substance. Or semi-illegal, depending on where you are. Uh, so yeah, I think there's some conflation there. There's certainly tons of taboo there. Uh, there is a lot of misinformation there, so um, har- hard to say. I think we can only speculate what the issue is. But what we do know is that. It's not worth it to uh to risk the fines and other issues for your business, maybe not being able to take payments on your website. Because Stripe won't allow it. Uh, so yeah, just, just be be mindful of that and hopefully we'll evolve. As a culture and and these things won't be uh quite um. Quite so tricky. Um. Right, yeah, and in the cities, it's, it it, yeah, it's, it's different, right? I'm originally from Alabama and it is wildly different there from where I live in New York City now. And I know you're, you're near Philly and you guys got a similar thing going on, so. Um, yeah, awesome. Well, thank you guys for all of these great questions today. Let us know what you would like to learn about next. Uh, we may create a training uh just for you. Head over to our Get Oil-ing Facebook group. Hope that uh that you'll connect with us there, meet your community and share your wins uh for the week. So uh head over there and let's keep the conversation going. Till then. Get on emailing your list, start sending those emails out every week. You've got people who can't wait to hear from you. Uh, look forward to seeing you guys same time next week. Take care, everybody.